The boat ramp, the cars and trucks that launch boats there will have plenty of room to be fully in the water launching their boats and then pull up and tie them off the, what they do, and then move forward to the rest of the park. So, there will be some traffic, but it's not like the path will be closed off two-thirds of the day while people are moving their boats. We're gonna cross the little channel there that's next to the boat ramp. It's a saltwater canal there with mangroves on both sides of it. We originally thought that our best solution there would be to buy a prefabricated bridge, like Northport uses a lot of them, so we went to Northport and talked to those folks. We thought we could go right over the mangroves and not have any issues, and that would be the easiest way to get this project permitted. We went down and met with DEP, and they told us, no, that would require a permit and mitigation because we're going through the mangroves. But if that were a piling-supported structure, with piles going down through the mangroves, we wouldn't need a permit. We've adjusted our design. We're designing it as a piling-supported bridge. It will be basically a wooden understructure, similar to what we have at Linear Park there by Fisherman's Village with treks decking. And we'll cross that canal with a couple piles in the canal to make it a piling-supported structure and tie into the harbor walk along forty-one there with a compass rose to match the rest of the harbor walk. Our intention here is that this will be plain concrete at this point. It's tying into plain concrete at both ends. We're crossing the sidewalk there that goes down to the boat ramp in between the two buildings, so that's our intention. And we haven't gotten to the part where we're gonna do the cost estimates and all, but we think we're well within our $200,000 budget. We glance, glad to answer any questions.
Councilmember Kiesling is okay with the concept plan?
Yes, Nancy.
I noticed that on the schematic for the bridge, you're looking at a twelve-foot width.
Yes, twelve-foot.
So, it looks like the width of the harbor walk through there is similar to the Mertz, at least, or a little bit wider than what we have in most cases.
A little bit wider. I believe the sidewalk there along forty-one is ten-foot side.
Yeah, it is, ten-foot, right. One of the questions that, where the dock comes up, you can just barely see it on the right-hand side there, what you've got on the screen. There's an area for a barbecue where the, is it possible to put some kind of bicycle rack somewhere along there so that if someone using the harbor walk would like to stop and maybe go to the ship store to get a refreshment, or to go over to get an ice cream cone or something, that there's a place to, a logical spot to put a bicycle rack?
Currently existing, for the record, Mitchell Austin Urban Design, currently existing in that plaza area between the two buildings, there are bicycle racks available. Certainly, we can look at other alternative locations. The existing sort of picnic area for the boaters will be relocated from its current location and tucked into the area immediately adjacent to the retaining wall of the ship store. So, that location is moving. But that facility will still be there for the boaters, but we're gonna make it a little bit more exclusive, sort of off the path, so that it's more or less reserved for the boaters there.
Yeah, you're right, there are some bicycle racks there. They may not be that visible to people that are just using the harbor walk, so I just encourage people to patronize the merchants that are there.
I assume you're gonna have some benches along the way?
Those are, the amenities are something that we haven't looked at at this scale. We're really just looking at, where should the path go? How can we get in between the buildings and have the minimal amount of conflicts with the existing pedestrian and vehicular ways?
Tom?
I like the, I like the plan. I think it's, I'm really pleased with it. The area between the crab house and the marina is an area that could accommodate some seating, I would think, as well, and would you?
Certainly, that is, there are opportunities there.
Are you okay?
Is the pathway ten feet?
It's twelve.
Twelve, okay. All right, good.
Are you okay?
Love it.
Looks good.
No bricks.
Thank you, looks good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving right along, our request for a waiver of lien interest at 501 Showalter Avenue.
I promised to just give some brief comments on this. You have the absolute discretion as to what you want to do in requests like this. We can, the city council has the authority to waive the lien altogether, require the lien payment amount plus some interest, waive the interest altogether. It's just, it's a fiscal determination based on the circumstances of each case and what might be in the best interest of the public.
Have we done this before?
I'm sure we have. It doesn't come up very often. More often, it comes up in the nature of a code enforcement lien, which goes before the Code Enforcement Board for Reduction or Elimination, but this is a different type of lien. This is not a fine. We did the work, and we impose a lien for repayment of the work. And so, there's like interest that accrues until that principal is paid, and then usually we want the interest too. But, you know, when there's a, what happens normally when you've got property that's got perhaps more value than this, and there's a transaction in order to clear title, the seller will pay it out of the proceeds of the sale.
Pay the interest?
Pay the whole amount. Otherwise, they won't be able to convey clear title.
Okay. Kim?
I'd just like to make a motion that we do away with the interest. The property, the value of the property is with the interest. I mean, you're almost at the value if you add the interest, so that you pay the lien, but not the interest.
Am I understanding then that you would like to accept Ms. Beretta's offer?
Yes.
I would like to second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion?
I have, I have an issue with it. I think that it may be a precedent-setting issue. You know, we require property owners to take care of their property, and if they don't do it, the city does it for them, and the city is entitled, expects to be paid for the expense that it's incurred in maintaining their properties, and it should be reimbursed to the city, so I'm not supportive of it.
Yes, with Rachel.
Councilmember Kiesling is okay. If the majority of council wants to waive the interest, she's fine with it. Not the lien, just the interest.
Yeah, just the interest.
Just a comment. In my opinion, looking at this, Ms. Beretta did not cause the problem. She inherited this piece of property, so it was, it would, in my opinion, it would be different if the person who was asking to have the interest waived was the person who didn't pay. In this case, Ms. Beretta merely inherited the property and is trying to do something productive with it, so I think it's a little bit different situation. I agree.
Any other comments?
No.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the lien fee without the interest for 501 Showalter Avenue. I assume that Rachel is voting yes?
Well, she can't vote.
She can't vote, okay. Maybe I need, just to have a little bit further discussion. It would seem that if the property's gonna be sold, that that interest thing could also be paid when the property is sold with the lien. Is that correct? Is that what I'm saying?
Well, it could be, but it's just a question of the valuation and how, you know, it may be less marketable to sell when that lien has to be paid. In other words, typically what happens is that either the seller pays it off ahead of time, or will pay it out of the proceeds of the sale. But what would then happen is that the purchase price would be increased to accommodate or address what needs to be paid off. Normally, in the situations like that, there's more value to the property, more coming back to the seller. There's not that much value.
Right, that's the issue.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve the, again, the request for a waiver of the lien interest at 501 Showalter Avenue. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Three to one. All right, we now move on to recommendations from city officers. City manager?
The next council meeting, which will be June third, I think, is going to be a budget council meeting. On the agenda, under the budget, we have our five-year capital improvements program presentation, recycling bids, and whether to go to carts versus bins. And Charlotte County will be giving us some information regarding possible development of a EMS, Emergency Medical Service, MSTU, breaking out the emergency medical services to a separate line on your tax bill, as opposed to just a part of the general fund.
Can you clarify that?
Right now, in the general fund, we in the city pay for EMS services, ambulance.
From the county?
From the county. It's part of the general fund. They may take those dollars, their proposal is to take those dollars, whatever those EMS costs are, reduce the millage rate in the general fund, and have it a separate line item on the tax bill.
On our tax bills, on Punda Gorda's tax bills?
And Charlotte County.
Oh, they're, they don't have it on Charlotte County's either?
No.
Okay.
So, it's gonna be on everybody's tax bill, but they need to get approval from us as well in order to do it. It's just a transfer of dollars, one-to-one. And the reason they're doing that, and I'm sort of stealing the county administrator's presentation on June third, so he'll be here to present it to you, is that when they did their budget survey, EMS was rated as the number-one priority, so they wanted to highlight to the community what EMS actually costs.
Okay.
They're not raising any millages, it's just a separate, but they're gonna have that presentation as well.
Okay. Is there any update from the school board? Have we heard from them with regards to our joining together in an open workshop? Do you want to have any information?
I don't know about that, but I did get together with Jerry Olivo and Ian Bitson, and met with them, and talked to them about the possibility of moving the site. They did, you know, we talked about the area, it being three-lane, it really is kind of a commercial corridor already. They cannot move it. What I understood was, for them to move it, it would not be a feasible project for them, for NO Petro or the school board to be able to move it because of the gas line, that it really wasn't possible. As far as the meeting, I'm not sure. I think that they, you know, would hope to get together with each one of us, and then maybe, because I didn't know what your questions were, I mean, my questions.
I think that's, I think that was the reason why we wanted to have an open meeting, was so that we could hear everyone else's questions and all of their answers to everyone's questions.
Did you send the letter?
We did send a letter. We sent the letter right after the last meeting. So, that's been now, what, two weeks?
No, we have not heard.
Have we heard from NO Petro?
No, we have not heard. I asked yesterday if we heard from NO Petro. They have not come in for a special exception. They have not come in to meet with us as far as their plans. I suppose we could contact them from a staff standpoint and ask them if they intend to. If they do not intend to, then we've got a problem.
I would like for our staff also to follow up with the question of the open workshop. We need to schedule that. We all have busy schedules, so we need to schedule that to get this summer. Is that agreeable?
We will contact NO Petro, and we will also contact the school district.
Okay. Any other, anything else, any other questions for Howard? With regards to our city attorney, we have the update relating to our revisions to the mineral resource abstraction.
Yes, briefly, just to recap, prior to the last city council meeting, and before the county commission adopted their final ordinance moving forward with the amendment to the comprehensive plan, we had submitted our comments to them, which they had the opportunity to modify the comprehensive proposed amendment consistent with our concerns. They did not. It went to final adoption. At the last city council meeting, you authorized me to send a letter to the county through the county attorney identifying the language that we would like to have to be included for the protection of the Shell Creek and watershed. I received an email, I guess it was, well, yesterday, I think it was, from the county attorney advising me that if our comments, our requested language is too late, that they've already adopted the amendment. To quote a classic American movie, Animal House, it ain't too late until we say it's too late. So, we have, we have until, we have until next Thursday to file a petition for administrative hearing challenging the adopted language, adopted ordinance, as being inconsistent with their comprehensive plan, the regional plan, and other allegations that I think we can definitively make. And when we timely file that, that suspends the effectiveness of the comprehensive plan amendment until that runs its course. Typically, the request for a hearing will result in a trial-like hearing in front of an administrative law judge out of Tallahassee, where we make our arguments, and have, even ultimately, a decision will be made as to whether or not the proposed amendment was consistent. And if it wasn't consistent, then it would be rejected, and they have to start over again. More often than not, filing the petition for a hearing preserves our right to do a trial. We don't have to have that trial scheduled right away, and more often than not, what happens is there's an opportunity then for the sides to get together and work out a resolution. We were, excuse me, we were requested to meet last week with one of the, one of the affected mining concerns, and we had a conference call over the phone with them. They were concerned about the language that I proposed to the county, but ultimately, they agreed with us that perhaps we can amend the language that I proposed to have more of a definitive criteria as it relates to the reduction of flow to Shell Creek, so that if the flow, if the mine's impact would have a de minimis, a minor, very minor, impact, and we can all agree as to what that target would be, they indicated that they would help us with, you know, try to get the county to agree to accept that. So, they were going to have their engineers and scientists see what they might come up with in the way of criteria. At the moment, what I'm asking for is your authorization to prepare the appropriate petition for hearing to submit to the Division of Administrative Hearings by next week's deadline, so that we at least preserve our right to go to a hearing, and give us the opportunity to see if we can't work this out with the county. And again, once we file that petition, the county's adopted ordinance is actually suspended until, until this gets resolved one way or another.
I think we should move forward, and I would agree.
I would too. Absolutely.
We have consensus.
All right, we'll, we'll do that then.
It's just, I have a question. Will Swift Mud likely weigh in on this diminutive effect of the minimum flow on this situation? Or is Swift Mud not gonna be involved in this?
Well, we had asked them to be involved by requesting, submitting our comments to them, and asking them to back our concerns, but we did not really get anything from them other than that they had agreed with the county that they were fine. Swift Mud's permitting that I reviewed, and you may recall, you know, I discussed this last time, they, their regulations and their permitting effort and review did not look at the, any decrease in the superficial aquifers input to Shell Creek in their mine permits, so.
Do we need to send a letter also then to Swift Mud with regards to their response to the county?
I mean, we could. I'm not so sure that there might not be a, kind of a gap in the regulation of these organi, of these mines between the Florida Department of Environmental Protection and Swift Mud. Typically, Swift Mud has been a water quantity agency as relates to deeper groundwater, and DEP had been more of a general agency to protect the environment in general. But with respect to the mining permits, the environmental resource permit that DEP has traditionally been responsible for administering has been delegated to Swift Mud. So, when Swift Mud is issuing those permits, although they're supposed to look at it also with the DEP's regulations in mind, I think because traditionally, they are a well and a consumptive use-related regulatory program, and they're looking at deeper aquifers, they do not look at, or at least it did not appear to me in these permits, they did not look at the impact on the superficial. Now, with respect to phosphate mine permits, that's a different story, because it's a different degree of project. Plus, traditionally, phosphate mines are constructed in the watersheds of creeks, because that's where the phosphate's located, and it has an impact on the superficial as well as the deeper aquifer. But the rock mines that these are, that we're concerned with generally aren't constructed, don't need to be constructed in watersheds. So, that's where I think there's been sort of like this gap that has been under addressed.
My, I'm sorry, go ahead. So, DEP is charged with the quality, and Swift Mud is the quantity? Is that what you're saying?
That's, yes, that's typically the way it is, although you can make the argument that by reducing the quantity of surface water or superficial water, superficial aquifer input to Shell Creek, that affects quality.
Right, I understand. Yeah, I understand that piece, but, so, both of them should be concerned with quality of the water.
Yes, yes. And so, what I'm proposing, and although in the best of worlds, Swift Mud should be fighting our battle for us.
I think that's where I was asking, maybe we should follow up with them and at least clarify our issues with them regarding their permitting process, so that when it comes to the next step, that they do support us.
Well, if, we can certainly do that. I'm not suggesting that we, that we don't do that. But if it is not within the purview of what they have, what they look at in their regulations as they currently exist, then what we're asking for is sort of a change in their regulations. What we would be getting if Charlotte County adopts our language in its comprehensive plan is we would actually be filling in that gap that apparently exists currently.
Nancy?
Yeah, I had a conversation with, I believe it's Melissa Dickens, who's from Swift Mud. She sits on the Regional Planning Council, and I kind of got the same response from her that you're stating, David, that it's, our issue really isn't what they do. It's not, it's, it's not that she didn't appreciate what we were saying, but it was not.
Not in their purview, and then, and then DEP is not in their purview, and so it's falling between the cracks, is exactly what they had said.
So, that's why our water quality is bad.
Well, and then, I have had conversations with the Regional Planning Council, planning, Mary Ann, I can't think of her last name now, Davana, I think Davana, and, and she's the one who has reviewed what originally Charlotte County had submitted to them and said, no, we are not going to approve anything, or that we would submit, we would recommend denial because the city and the county have not worked it out, and they want to see us working it out. And so, it won't get down there. It won't get on their agenda at all. So, obviously, then Charlotte County is circumventing procedures in order to do this.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't suggest that. I mean, they went through the procedure. What happened was the Regional Planning Council decided not to make it, not to make the comments within the time period that they were required to make.
No, actually, they made the comments. It was on our agenda. It was Charlotte County asked to have it continued.
Okay.
And pulled it from our agenda. And so, Charlotte County knows that, they've been told by the, by the staff at the Regional Planning Council, that they want the city and the county to work it out and come back to us when you have something worked out. And I have continued to talk to Mary Ann to find out, have they come back to you with anything? And she said, no, we haven't heard anything at all, so.
Tom, did you come?
Yeah, it is Swift Mud that dictates the minimum flow requirements. And if we were to agree, or if an agreement was to come together about a diminutive quantity of that spillover, doesn't Swift Mud have to be involved in it?
Swift Mud has not put into effect any minimum flows yet. They delayed that.
And I understand that, but at some point, they may be doing that, and if...
Well, yeah, they may. We've heard the "may" for I don't know how many years now, and they have not done it. That was one of the arguments we were making with our ROB. They just have, they keep putting it off. But the fact that we were gonna apply for a petition for administrative hearing, we're still gonna try and work this thing out, because again, we're waiting to hear from comments, and if we get comments back from this independent group that satisfy our concerns, we'll come back to you, and then we'll send it to the county, and, I mean, hopefully they'll agree.
I just think that we need to get Swift Mud to sign on to whatever we come out of this with.
I guess that's where I was suggesting.
And I don't see any downside to that. I mean, what I would prefer to do, not prefer, what I would like to do is if, is if we get some recommendation with respect to specific criteria to include in that language, it wouldn't hurt for us to run that by Swift Mud and see what, you know, whether they think, whether they agree that that would be de minimis, and move forward. Because the last thing I, you know, last thing I wanna do is suggest something that's been sold to us as being not very impactful, but since I don't know that we have yet on board the expertise to evaluate that necessarily, I find that we've made a big mistake. So, it's an important thing, and getting Swift Mud to sign off, sign off on that would be very helpful.
Sure. And I would think to have our utilities director involved in that as well would be helpful.
I mean, if, if, if the worst-case scenario, the way I look at it, pans out, and that is that we have to actually go to a trial-type hearing on this, one of the things that, that we could, we could present at that hearing is not only why it's detrimental to allow for this mine to continue without addressing that issue, but even offer up a way to resolve it. Because at these hearings, essentially, they're called de novo hearings. They're evaluating and coming up with a, a solution, as opposed to determining at the end of the day whether it's consistent or not consistent. If they can bring it into consistency, I think that's what the objective is. And that's not an inexpensive process to have to go through the trial and bring witnesses. So, if we can, and hopefully, the county would be concerned about that as well. So, if we can reach a settlement that we're comfortable with, with the input of Swift Mud or anybody else that we want to give us some guidance on that, that would be the best.
And I would hope we would not have to go to a hearing. I believe that this can be resolved. It should have been able to be resolved.
And I will say that filing the petition for hearing that would preserve our rights to the hearing does not put us on a track that is not, you know, it's like a runaway train. We have, we will have the opportunity, if, for whatever reason, the council decides not to go forward with the hearing, we can take a voluntary dismissal of that at any time.
But we only have until next Thursday to answer this.
Correct.
So, that's the first step in this?
Yes, yes.
I mean, I, you know, I just think that, again, our water quality is the most important issue we have. I mean, we can make beautiful pathways and all that, but if we don't have good water, no one's gonna wanna live here.
So, may we then charge you with preparing that and sending that letter on our behalf?
Yeah, I would file... Yeah, I would file a petition, it's kind of like a, a, you know, starting a lawsuit, it's like a complaint, so that's what I would draft, and I would, I would file that, that as...
And you'll send copies then to the commission as well?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Are we in agreement?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you. Anything else?
That is it.
Okay. Uh, our city clerk, Ms. Smith?
Yes, under boards and committees, we still have a few vacancies. Uh, we have a three-year term on the Burnt Store Isles Canal Advisory Committee. We have one unexpired term on the Historic Preservation Advisory Board. We have two three-year terms as alternates on the Historic Preservation Advisory Board. And we have a three-year term on the Utility Advisory Board. And that's it.
Thank you. Um, did you have a question about the appointments?
Well, we have, we have an applicant. Do we have to wait for that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. He turned his application in after it was, the agenda had already been, had come out, so we have his, we have his information.
Wait till next time.
He'll be nominated, or, uh, the vac- he'll be, he can be nominated at the next meeting.
Okay. And I also asked Karen this morning, um, have somebody that I thought of that perhaps might be interested, or I would like to encourage them to, um, consider the Historic Preservation Advisory Board, but they aren't a citizen, they're a resident and they own property here, but they're not a citizen, and I just wanted to make sure that that would be acceptable.
And I had, um...
I just think they would be a great, um...
I, I had staff research that, um, for me, and there is no requirement for citizenship. There are some boards that require residency, but that doesn't speak to citizenship, so...
Okay, well, they have, they're a resident, so...
You mean citizens of the United States?
Correct.
No, I, that's, we don't have to worry about.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. I didn't want to, I didn't want to do something and then someone goes, oh, well, that, you know, it stopped me in the tracks.
Well, oftentimes you see those words in, in ordinances, you know, citizen of, city of, of, of Pontagorda or, or resident, and I think it's just, it's just sloppy drafting, um, really what we're wanting, is somebody that is, that resides here.
Some of the, um, I have, um, in some of the discussions with the, the Clerks Association, uh, there are some municipalities that require the individual, the individuals to be registered voters, which would then require citizenship, but we don't...
That was the case when they regard to the Tourist Development Council, uh, that they had to be, uh, what they called them electors, Charlotte County electors, which means they have to be registered voters in Charlotte County. So it prohibits, um, people that may have businesses here, but they're not a, a voter here, so they can't participate. And I just wanted to make sure there wasn't some regulation that prohibited something. So, um, this person was, has been a great volunteer in the community in the past and might be able to do something for us.
Good.
That'd be wonderful.
Thank you.
Just one, I'd just like to say it was a really good idea to send out notifications to all of the recent graduates from the Citizens Academy to encourage them to apply, it's like, you know...
Now that they know what, what goes on.
And we actually did get someone interested, so hopefully we'll get an application from him, so...
Great, great job.
Very good, thank you. Policy and legislation. I did, um, have an opportunity to speak with Representative Rogerson with regards to, obviously, the next step with our legislature. He's hopeful that the RRO plant is not dead in the water in terms of funding for it, but there, it yet, is yet to be seen. And I think that our lobbyist, Jerry Paul, is also, um, has indicated, you know, keep the faith, we'll, they'll keep trudging along on that. Northport, and I did share or had, um, Michael share with you information with regards to, um, Northport has a local transportation assistance program called FISH, Friends in Service Here, a nonprofit that provides transportation to those who are unable to drive themselves. And I was thinking that this is, would be the type of ideal program for not only the east side of the, uh, community, but each of the different neighborhoods, Pontagorda Isles, Burnt Store Isles, et cetera, where we might try to encourage, and maybe Team Pontagorda could kind of help take the lead on this, but it would be an opportunity to really service our seniors who probably need some help. But I really liked that idea, it's, uh, was very good. And I wanted just to, uh, congratulate Captain Lewis, um, who is serving as a sitting member of the Standards Review and Interpretation Committee for the, uh, law enforcement, the Florida Law Enforcement Review Commission. That is extremely important in terms of any accreditation program, and he's helping to make the, the rules in Florida. So I think that that is commendable, and just wanted to, to thank him for doing that and congratulate him for being on that. And I think that's all I have. Tom?
Yes, at the last meeting, I shared some information with you that I received from boat, uh, Cito and Towboat U.S. about, there was about sixty or seventy towings or, or groundings that occurred in, uh, ponds and let. I'm wondering if we might want to entertain some type of information sharing between the towing services and our police department and our, uh, canal maintenance, uh, people, not just for ponds, but for all of the city in, inlets, so that we can, we can track them. I, I know that canal maintenance would love to have information on, uh, grounding, if there was some dredging required, they'd be on it in, in a heartbeat. And for safety purposes, I think our police should be informed of conditions and various inlets, so they can get a handle on, uh, what might be a problem and what might not be a problem, so I thought I...
Have you had a chance to talk with, uh, Cito, or, I mean, in terms of their, the process that they would use to make sure that they would share that information?
I haven't specifically asked them that, but they, they do file a report for every instance, and if they could forward that to the city, both the police and, uh, the canal maintenance, I think it might be very helpful for us to monitor situations like that and just be more informed. We may want to run it by the canal maintenance committees or the canal advisory boards and get some additional input from them, but I think it's something we might want to pursue.
I think that's a great idea.
Great idea.
In, in your discussions with them, since if they did send those to us, they would be a, a public record, if it would make them more comfortable, they can, um, you know, redact the, the personal, the, the name of their member and, and a location, just indicate the incident and location and time and stuff like that.
I, I didn't intend to have any conversation with them, I think that we should flesh it out with, with the advisory committees and see if they're all on board with it, and then we can, can come up with a, a method or a vehicle to do that. Staff should be able to take care of that.
We can just go ahead and do it.
I, I don't see, yeah, I don't see any reason for it to go back to the canal maintenance. I mean, this would be information that would be available for our police, our marine group, also for our, and I agree with...
Our VIPs. I agree with David, to redact, um, individual, uh, member information.
And, uh, one more thing, has anybody heard anything about the Housing Authority, their progress on the, uh, the senior housing, the Verandas Phase One or Phase Two?
They have, we have a meeting, I think, tomorrow. Do we have a meeting tomorrow?
Yeah, Phase One has already come in for permit.
Yeah, Phase One is already, we're still waiting...
Didn't see any shovels in the ground, so that's...
No, I think we're...
Yes, thank you.
Steve Fabian, Vice Chair of the Housing Authority, uh, we're having a meeting tomorrow. The Phase One, we're hope, pretty close to almost getting a contract, and we will have a groundbreaking fairly soon. I don't know the exact date yet. As Phase Two, there was, we were approved, we were second from the bottom of the whole group for the nine percent credit. We will be, but there was a challenge, and the challenge, we won't know until probably around June, but we still feel very confident that we'll be okay on that. And just while I'm up here, the property behind the Justice Center, we put the bid pa- packages out, we're just waiting for responses on it.
That'd be interesting. Would you keep us posted?
Pardon?
Will you keep us posted?
Yeah, I, I hope to find tomorrow how many pick, people picked up that pack.
And when is the, the opening, Steve, the, the bid opening? You have a date on that?
June sometime, I think the bid package will due the twenty-fifth of this month.
The twenty-fifth.
And, or it's when, come back, so probably, maybe it's the twenty-fifth.
Right, we were going to do it the same day that came.
Yeah, so...
So...
Thank you.
I'll send you an email at the tomorrow meeting.
Thank you, appreciate that. Thank you.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Nancy?
Um, yeah, I really enjoyed the pickleball, um, that we've been cutting yesterday, that was awesome. Um, but I, I have an issue that I brought, um, to you, it's actually on our agenda, and it's to discuss, um, fence materials that are allowed in the special residential overlay district.
Oh, yes, okay.
And, uh, this came to me, resident Kevin Koch, who is here, and, um, Kevin, um, lives in Burnt Store Meadows, and he, um, has a, a two-phase project, and he installed, he has, I, actually I took pictures which are, um, in our agenda, uh, package, and the, um, pictures of his, his fence, it was to, uh, back in two thousand nine when he installed the first phase, it was, he, you know, got it permitted, and, and, um, so now he's ready to go, do Phase Two, and he came in and applied for the permit, he had some time off, uh, planned, and he was, applied for the permit and said, denied, and because it's no longer in our code. And, uh, council changed the code back in two thousand eleven, eliminating wooden picket fences from the code. They're allowed in the special, in the, um, neighborhood center, and they're allowed in the historic district, but they're not allowed in the special residential overlay. So I asked, um, Michael, um, what are the, the course of action here? I went out and looked at, at Kevin's fence, it looked just fine, he picked the, the, to have a stained wooden fence rather than a white picket fence, because he wanted it to more or less blend in as opposed to stand out, and, um, it's well-maintained. And so according to David, the only recourse we had was actually to, to go through a special variance, um, our, uh, variance permit. Well, um, a variance would cost seven fifty, and that's about maybe what the additional fence would cost, and we would not know if council would be willing to entertain this. So, um, I talked with Terry Tubbs, and, and Terry said that, yeah, we've, we've got it in our other codes, if, for our other areas, um, we just don't have it for the special residential overlay. So, um, rather than asking Kevin to move his house into the other areas where we allow it, um, it's, uh, asking council if we would consider, uh, changing the code to allow a wooden picket fence, we allow vinyl picket fence, we don't, just don't allow wood, and that we would have the same kinds of things, um, around this, that it would be painted or stained. Um, I think Terry has very specific language which she could offer up that would be, make sure that these things are maintained. Um, but this, you know, Kevin is, is, wants to do the right thing, he's the Vice President of the, of the Charlotte De Soto Building Industry Association, wants to set a good example for all, so, um, I'm just bringing it to you for your consideration.
Come in, go ahead.
When we brought this, when this issue was brought up back in, I guess it was two thousand and eleven, um, the council at that time did not want wood fences in the special residential overlay district. So, um, we have somewhat of a new group.
But it's interesting that we allow the other fences.
Yes.
And that's, that to me is, it, you know, some of these painted wood fences look much better than a, a vinyl fence or a chain link fence.
Well, yeah, I, I drove down Williams Street yesterday and coming to the pickleball, and happened to look over to my left and saw this beautiful white picket fence, which looks just exactly like this fence, only it's painted white and it's wood, and was in great shape and lovely, and so...
I can imagine where that is, across from the pickleball court?
No, 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 on Williams Street. I was driving on Williams Street.
I'm chasing, I'm chasing.
Um, I, I think probably why they might have decided that was they are a lot of work, and it is a lot of maintenance to keep them looking good. Um, so if it's not everyone's pleasure to change it, couldn't he get some kind of special exception, because he already, looks like he has ninety percent of his fence already done, he just needs a little...
Well, he's going to actually, his property is a, is more of a pie-shaped lot, and so if you were to go out and see, there's quite an area to the left of his house that he wants to extend, so the amount of fencing is considerably, uh, more than what he has.
Okay.
And, um, um...
I guess I almost agree with Kim, it would be that it was already, he already had the fence permitted before, why wouldn't he be allowed just the extension?
There's no guarantee when you apply for a special exception or a variance and pay seven hundred and fifty dollars that you'd want to get it.
I guess what I'm saying is, as a council, we could just allow that for that particular situation.
Well, you don't know that.
You don't know that.
You don't know that, and you have to pay the fee upfront, have to pay the fee when you apply. So, um, I went through all this to find out, how can we do this, because I really felt badly, Kevin didn't create the problem, we did. You know, he's kind of caught in the middle, um, and he is now, um, non-conforming, there's a term for it, um...
Existing non-conforming.
Existing non-conforming.
Existing non-conforming.
And, and our non-conforming language prohibits an expansion of the existing non-conformers?
I see.
And I also agree that wooden fences are a lot of work, I wouldn't want to put up a wooden fence, um, had wooden decks in Colorado, and they're a lot of work, but, um, um, you know, we do allow it in the rest of our cities, I kind of feel like...
I would like to hear the rationale of why it was not permitted by the, the original council that, that termed it down, I'd like to hear what their rationale was.
It probably was very similar to what's been said, is that they were not ma- you know, would be difficult to maintain, and the concern of, um, maintenance and what they would look like.
The issue I have, though, is, well, why do we single out the special residential overlay? I mean, why, why do we allow them in the historic district? Why do we allow them in, it, it seems to me like we should either not allow them at all, or we should allow them.
Well, I can answer that question, please. We here in the historic district are a little bit more flexible, and we like, uh, but the special residential overlay are very particular about what's in their neighborhood.
And I'm not sure if that was in the original, uh, code or not, and that might be where it came from.
Well, this came through the, uh...
And I'm not saying it's a bad thing.
No, I understand what you're saying.
And the original...
I think we should just allow it, I don't understand.
We go through the LDR committee, the LDR committee is made up of representatives of all the neighborhoods, they help comment on things like this, and it goes through the planning commission. So there's a lot of input into this before it even gets to council.
And it was originally done in what?
I read all of that information.
Two thousand and eleven.
I read all the information back when, because Terry, when this first came up, Terry sent me all the documentation of when, of the, all the meetings that went on, and it seemed like the, the conversations had nothing to do with them being wood, the conversation was about slats flying through the air and, in the wind, kind of thing. Well, that can happen to anything, so...
Shall we send it back to LDR?
We could, I actually have a meeting scheduled for the twenty-ninth and, of this month.
That's great, let's do that.
Pass the buck.
Pass the buck.
Pass the buck. Uh, but if it dies there, then it dies there. Um, but perhaps, I, I think the, the issue is if we allow it in one area...
I think that's really kind of, I think that that's really, uh, we can do that, but I think that we're just passing the buck. I think we need, in my opinion, it's like, why, why would we, um, it's almost having a, being two-faced about this, allowing it in one spot and not the other.
And I believe, I believe, Nancy, it probably came out of the original code, uh, deed restrictions.
Right.
It came out of the deed restrictions and what the city has done, did it?
Could be, that's a good point.
No, it wasn't in there either? This was later?
I don't believe so, no. Uh, prior to, um, two thousand and eleven, any fence material was allowed in the special residential overlay district.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, that's how you got some of the galvanized, uh, chain link fences. A lot of the discussion about the wood fences were more due to the solid panel, uh, the concern was raised there, concern was raised for maintenance. What we did in the, uh, neighborhood residential area of, uh, the district as, of the city, as to maintenance, we did put in a provision that all wood fencing shall be constructed using new decay-resistant or percolated material, and shall be finished with either a clearcoat, wood stain, or be painted and maintained without discoloring or rotting wood. Um, we have had, um, code enforcement cases where, uh, we have found areas where, but maybe it just, a portion of the fence is not being maintained and required the property owners to repair or replace those areas that were not being maintained. But, uh, that is being enforced as far as the maintenance of the wood.
Well, I'm good with the wood fence, I mean, I'll let you know that.
Thank you.
So what do you want us to do?
I would, I guess my preference would be to let the Land Development Regulation Group review it one more time and say, is there any other reason? Because if it is allowed in, uh, other areas of the community, why not in the, uh, overlay districts? So, um, and then with similar criteria. Okay? Is that, is that acceptable?
That's fine.
Three to one, Nancy.
Well, it's three to one, I, I, well, um, no. I'll say no, on my behalf, but, you know.
I think we've, we're... I think we're done with this particular topic, but, okay. Thank you.
You don't want to let the homeowner make a comment?
Oh, is this your home? I'm sorry, sir. Please. I didn't...
That's okay. My name's Kevin Koch. I live in Burnt Store Meadows, and there's a couple of things that this affects. One is I've already got a wood fence there, and if I put a vinyl one up next to it, it's going to look really, really bad. So financially, I just can't afford to replace both fences. And two, also, I just really believe the look. I look around my neighborhood, I got chain link here, I got this here, I got this, and mine looks beautiful, and that's just all I want it to look like.
Chain link is allowed?
Vinyl-coated.
That's, that's the one I don't even understand why that's...
I look around and I see mine, and it just does not make sense to me.
Thank you, sir.
We will send it to the LDR for the comments, and then based on that, we will then bring it back to you, the June 3rd council meeting, and you can decide then whether or not you want to go through the ordinance amendment process.
I would like to also have the Marie look at the vinyl-coated chain link. I don't, that to me is not, not attractive. I mean, I would much prefer your style of, of picket fence rather than, but I don't know if there is consensus for that.
I, I agree with you.
Does anyone else agree?
I agree, yes.
You like vinyl coated?
No, I don't mind the, the vinyl coated.
Have them just take a look at it. Thank you. All right, Kim?
Nothing, well, I did want to congratulate Captain Lewis and Howard, congratulations on 10 years, and I wish you'd stay for another 10. I know you won't, but...
I'll be too old.
All right, we have citizens' comments.
Steve Fabian. Congratulations, Howard. I always tell people that God was looking at us when we found Howard, so, thank you. Just real quick, don't too, don't get too quick to jump in bed with the county on this deal of breaking out the EMS fund. You know, the average taxpayer concentrates on the ad valorem number, and if you start breaking out more and more of this stuff, that gets hidden. And even though you can say, well, it's going to be equal now, that could change very drastically, because the average taxpayer doesn't look at the SWF MUD thing, they don't look at, they look at the ad valorem. So don't be too quick to jump in bed with the county on this.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Mr. Harrington?
Good morning. For the record, Bob Harrington with Charlotte County Pontegorroda MPO. Just wanted to bring to everyone's attention, we're in the process of updating our long-range transportation plan, and we're in the middle of public workshops. We had one last night at the Englewood Library, it was well-attended, and tonight, we're at the Event Center from four to six. Basically, we're looking for input from the general public on what they would like to see for transportation improvements for the future. We're going all the way out to the year 2040, and we want to make sure that we're including everybody's input on this, but I would invite you to attend, and if you can't make tonight's, tomorrow, we're at the Cultural Center at the same time from four to six. But thank you for the time.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Good afternoon. Todd Helt, for the record. May is National Foster Care Month, and so I just wanted, I'm a foster parent, myself and my partner Jill Corey are foster parents. I just wanted to recognize that and bring it to everyone's attention, and I'll just quote a little phrase from the site. It's a time to recognize that we each can play a part in enhancing the lives of children, youth in foster care. And I wanted to mention, there's a lot of ways that everybody can do this. One is as a volunteer, guardian ad litem, which is the voice of children that are in state care for the court, at, in court, and you basically volunteer and go to court and take, address the children's needs and where they will end up living in foster care or back with their parents and so on. Very, very important person. And there's an organization called CASA, the Court Appointed Special Advocates, right here in town in the 20th Judicial Circuit, and that you can also be foster parents. Our demographic, a lot of us are more suited for guardians, but we've got a three-year and a four-year, three-year-old and a four-year-old right now, and you can make a difference and you can save lives right here at home by being part of the, the program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to make comments? Citizen comments? All right, seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, got to get up to the restore.
Yes.
Oh, okay. No time for lunch today.